My bike's over at my kid's house right now.
Oh, yeah?
You were?
I felt like I was gonna do a barrel roll out the backside.
After back.
You can go ride, man, head me up.
All right, Michelle, you're in charge of when we start.
I'm off Sundays. I'm off on Sundays.
Oh crap, I have to pull my computer up.
You got some mandatory overtime.
Hmm?
Good to go.
They're sitting at an intersection with radiant heat and use.
See, we have more on that. Can we just see?
Rick's excused.
Rick, but he's excused?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then Wanda's on the.
She's on the phone.
Yeah.
That's it?
Yeah, that is.
All right. Are we ready? Okay, wanna welcome everybody to our Tuesday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission uh work session. Um, we all like to, for the record, every, all commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Herman, who's been excused. Uh, do we have any public, well, we don't do public comment in our work session, so. Presentation reports, Mr. Raggett?
Thank you, I actually do have some things, um, first off, per the mayor and per some discussion we had today for work meetings, work sessions, we're going back upstairs to that conference room, if you're uncomfortable being up there, feel free to bring a mask or whatever you feel you need to, in a little bit closer quarters, still be a public meeting. He's also asked that we, um, in lieu of doing like a, a full agenda review, that we turn it more into a true work session and do training and try to look at some other issues forthcoming and, and have some of those dialogues, so be on lookout for that, we may still do a review of the agenda, but maybe not in the, the capacity that we have, where we review it and then we come back and have a meeting and review it again, so it may doesn't feel so redundant.
Redundant, yeah.
But that doesn't mean that there won't be probably, uh, opportunities still to ask questions about agenda items, I just may not go over them the same way I have, so we're still trying to formulate that, you'll see a similar behavior with the city council going forward, that we're trying to shift gears a little bit, so the other cities have done it that way, in previous jurisdictions, I've worked in, that's how we did it, so I'm not surprised that we're talking about maybe doing that more so here, so it'll feel more like maybe a true work meeting or work session going forward as opposed to a pre, a pre-meeting just to then go over everything in the main meeting kind of thing, so. Um, that may mean that some of those meetings are longer and shorter as a result, depending on what we talk about and kind of the context, but I wanted to make you aware of that change, um, in both aspects. Second thing, I'm gonna turn it over to Michelle, she's our new city recorder, maybe let her take just a, a minute of spotlight to, were you, you weren't with the planning commission last time? Yeah, that's what I thought, so I'll turn it over to Michelle, 'cause I ran that meeting, I remember, and it was kinda messy. Well, I'll turn it over to Michelle, maybe to share a little bit about herself with you and, and go from there.
Do you think? My name's Michelle Maragoni, I've been here for almost a month now, would've made the last count, the last meeting, but, um, they got canceled, so. This is my first one, and if you wanna know anything about me, go ahead and ask, oh, look, I don't, uh, do spotlight real well.
Oh, I can, I can help with, with what she's not willing to, to, to say, she, she comes from the sheriff's department, she was the records management specialist or something like that, right?
Yeah, I was, I supervised a few different departments, um, mostly in corrections, I did a lot of record stuff with the law enforcement, I was over evidence, a couple different things, I was there almost seventeen years.
Wow.
Wow. In different capacities, right, three or four different roles at different times, yeah. So she comes with, with a huge background in, in public administration, but in a little bit different venue, so we're excited to have her. Um, Bill likes to communicate this, so I might as well communicate, she was my top pick as far as the, the interviewing panel, uh, recommended and forwarded to the mayor, so we're happy to have her. She will be also, uh, filling in a little bit different position than the city recorders have historically, more so with the community development department picking up some of the needs and the slack that, that we haven't had fulfilled, both with the building official as well, some of the things I do, so who knows, maybe someday in the future, she might even present some of these items in future meetings, we may, we may hand off items to her and see how that goes, so we're kinda exploring that, where it's new, but, but, uh, our city administrator and the mayor felt like there was an opportunity here where she's very qualified, uh, to do the city recorder job, to maybe have her do some more things, help with community development, so she may be having kind of a, a combo face going forward as, with both departments and, and our needs, so just know that about her. Um, otherwise, other presentations and reports, more just what's going on in the city, uh, Boathouse Cajun Seafood Restaurant has opened up, I think they're open, right, Michelle? Yeah, they're opened up.
Where's that, yeah?
It's over by.
These places used to be over.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're over by, um, Shoe Carnival, so they're open for business.
They're right across from it.
Uh-huh. And, uh, we have a new barber shop, Greatest of All Time Goat Barber Shop going in next to PC laptops.
I did notice that.
Yeah, go, it's, it's actually a, a, a chain, they're actually expanding ver- really quickly in the state.
Oh, isn't it?
Greatest of all time.
Goat, Goat Barber Shops, Greatest of All Time is what it stands for, yeah. So they're going in, and then we're getting another, uh, salon, Spark Studios, so we're, we're growing salons and hair cutting places left and right in our community.
Needed though.
So.
I know that.
The, uh.
It's needed.
The corner hair cutting, the, the salon place on the corner, that's what Spark Studios will be like, I think they'll sublet hair cutting opportunities to, to unlicensed individuals to, to fill in those spaces, but that will go in between Crumble Cookie and Lunchbox Wax is where that will go in, so. Um, Cafe Rio is planning to have a grand opening August sixth, as soon as I get more information, I'll let you know, but that's their goal, that's what they're shooting for. Um, Autozone is close to completing their, uh, split, if you will, in the Pep Boys space.
Um, did they merge?
They, well, I thought they were gonna merge, but actually split, so Pep Boys got out of the, the parts industry, they're only gonna do tires and, and auto servicing, and Autozone is filling the rest of their space where they once sold goods throughout the whole entire country, that's what's happening.
Are they owned by the same company now?
I, I don't think so, I think they just had a relationship where they negotiated that.
Joint venture.
Yeah, Autozone's taking over that side of it, so. Um, and then Dutch Brothers Coffee, they are moving pretty quickly on their site as well. Uh, we finally had Raising Cane's come and pull their building permit, they're hoping to start maybe as early as Friday, and, uh, Mobeta's is somewhere in the middle of all that, so, so that's where things are going with that project. Um, the apartment project up off of three hundred, you see that a building is, is coming along pretty, pretty quickly as well, the pool is started, um, and some of those improvements are going in, and I believe that's all the more recent things that are going on. So, if you have any other questions, though, about anything I've missed, or you're just curious, let me know and we can talk about it, and obviously, we will have, uh, more projects forthcoming with, with some of the other things that are, are coming down the pipe. Uh, one thing I will note, Maverick will be coming back on the twenty-seventh, I've already received their application's middle, and then I have a new project, a new preliminary application that will be forthcoming as well for a residential multifamily in an area that's already zoned R five, so that will be coming at the next meeting. So that's everything I have at this point, and I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raggett. We have our consent, items, consideration of meeting minutes from June eighth, twenty twenty-one, the work session, regular meeting. Did anybody notice anything? And then we have our action items, discussion regarding proposed rezone request for properties located approximately forty-eight oh four south, forty-eight sixteen south, forty-eight forty-four south, and forty-nine hundred south, fifteen hundred west, Riverdale, Utah. Consideration to set the public hearing for, for, for a proposed rezone request from agricultural A-one zoning to regional commercial C-three zoning for properties located at approximately forty-eight oh four south, forty-eight, what? Forty-eight sixteen south, forty-eight forty-four south, forty-nine hundred south, fifteen hundred west. Riverdale, Utah, eight four four oh five, as requested by AWA Engineering Group and represented by Jake Tate, Mr. Raggett?
Thank you, and, and obviously, representation by Jake Tate is, is with Ted Heaps instead, who's present with us tonight, so, so he is the applicant representing this request on behalf of all the property owners and properties listed therein. Um, as you can see, the application has been submitted, uh, fee has been paid for, uh, we're representing pretty much everything along fifteen hundred from, uh, just inside of the Gibby Floral Space, all the way to America First Credit Union on the east side of the road, that's what we're talking about, and you'll see that in the map. Um, all the property owners have signed independently, representing their, their interest to allow Mr. Heap and AWA Engineering to reflect their interest with this rezone request. Um, following their signatures, you'll see, again, typical stuff we have, the requirements, and the documents have been provided in, in fulfillment of those requirements, you'll see the narrative, um, from AWA relative to the rezon, again, this is more FYI, this isn't where we get down in the weeds, this is more just kinda give you a primer on it, and then I see, after we set the public hearing and after ha- having a public hearing, we can get and, and talk about more of it, but kinda gets you introduced to it and what, what's going on here. Um, the general plan does support, just, just for the sake of knowledge, the general plan does support the proposed zoning request, high, high intensity commercial, um, and that, that would be completely fine on this property per the general plan. Um. I think that really, there's not a whole lot more to say, obviously, our next Planning Commission meeting would be on the twenty-seventh of this month, so two weeks from today, so that would be a date you could, um, set that for if, if a motion is made to do so. And with that, I would defer to Planning Commission, if you have any questions for me outside of what I've discussed.
Wanda, can you hear everything?
I can, thank you.
Let's see. Um, number two, review and discuss proposed amendments to certain chapters located in Title Ten of the Riverdale Municipal Code.
I, yeah, I, let me, I will hand you guys a draft, you, planning commissioners, if you'll pass one around and including one down to Michelle, that'd be great, and then, Wanda, I will have to email a copy of this, so you're gonna be flying blind a little bit for this conversation, but, um, I will email you after the fact, the, the changes, so that you can give me feedback on it.
Okay.
And then I will also.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and then I'll make sure to get, uh, Mr. Commissioner Herman a copy as well, so. Just pass that kind of around.
Just to, you want him to pass it?
Yep, yep, and then we'll give the extras to, to our city recorder. Um, this is, these are, these are proposed Title Ten code changes, they're, um, changes that will affect chapters two, um, nine C and fourteen of our city code, as, as far as how they're represented, and there's two issues at stake here, one we have talked about in my presentation from the legislative update, one we have not. So the first one I, that I have shown on here, and, and I guess if we get far enough along, we may not have a whole lot to discuss in the main session, that's okay, 'cause really, it was just a review and discussion in either case. Um, the chapter fourteen, regulations applicable to all zones, yard regulations, which is that subsection L, is regarding a, a land use, building code issue that we had, kind of a, I guess not really a building code as much as it affects the building official and how you, issues building permits, we had not too long ago, a, a request to do an enclosed patio and extend the patio, um, roof line from the rear of the home, and as a result of this code, the setback allowed twenty-five feet for rear yard setback, but this code said they couldn't enclose their patio, and there's a weird discrepancy there. Well, following the code strictly, we said no, they appealed it, it went to the appeal authority, and the appeal authority kind of split the cat down the middle and said, "To this extent, you can do it, but also, city, you're wrong and your code needs to be more clear." So they were granted, if you will, a variance to do what they were asking for the most part, not a hundred percent, but they got most of what they want, I can't remember exactly what the outcome he gave them was, I think he allowed them to enclose it and extend the patio, but they wanted it further back than, than what he granted them, I think that was the compromise, I think they wanted twenty feet and he gave them the twenty-five. So given that guidance and direction, um, we, we've cleared it up, and if you even look at the term lower, lower is, is bad language in any ordinance, lower is, is up and down, not obviously distance, and so when you're talking setbacks or a distance from the property line, you don't wanna use terms like lower or higher, 'cause it's, it's very confusing what you're talking about, right? So here, here is the recommendation of, of what we're looking at, the twenty-five feet matches, um, almost every single, single-family residential zone in the community minus the R-one four point five, so in talking to the building official and the attorney, they felt like that, that was the, the right number in, in lieu of that thirty, which creates this weird five-feet gray area of what do you deal with it in that kind of circumstance, so we don't end up in that position again. So that's what you're seeing there. Um, really, there are not a whole lot more to say than there's just a few word changes to make it clear, and then the distances matching now the actual rear yard setback for, for all those residential zones where this would be applied, and then some, so. Um, the other item is, is moving on to affecting chapters two and chapter nine and chapter fourteen in different sections, and that is this internal accessory dwelling unit discussion that, that I presented to you a couple weeks ago from the legislative, um, session, it was House Bill eighty-two. We have to have this ordinance, an ordinance updated and completed by, um, October first, if we do not do it by October first, we're bound into it anyway, by the state standard as opposed to our standard. So basically, it's one of those that either cities, you chart your destiny, or you will be ba- bound into what the state says will happen, and all single-family dwelling residential zones will be allowed to have this. So what the, what?
It's statewide, right?
Yeah, statewide, so what House Bill eighty-two does say, though, it gives a couple of outs for cities, which is kinda nice, says any unit that's six thousand square feet or smaller, it's a single-family dwelling, you can outright remove from this being applied to. Any, um, mobile home residence, single-family dwelling, mobile home park, you can exclude those areas from this being applied, and it allows you to take twenty-five percent of your zoned, single-family dwelling zones to, you, you can remove them from that, so in doing the math, I had, uh, assistance from a, a geographical information systems specialist who I work with come in and, and do a quick analysis of our city. Now, A-one zoning is a residential zone by the definition of single-family dwelling zone, so we applied the A-one zone and all the other applicable zones, as you, you can't see it as well here, but it's basically A-one plus the zones that are orange and yellow. Um, by taking in the twenty-five percent, it, it, it lets us remove the, um, R-one-six, R-one four point five, and the R-one-eight zones, in addition to obviously the multifamily that, that aren't applicable, 'cause multifamily has to be single-family dwelling, so the R-three, R-four, R-five can be omitted, and then we can obviously omit RMH-one, so really, wh- what zones would, this would allow to have internal accessory dwelling units would be your A-one, your A-two, your RE-fifteen, your RE-twenty, your R-one-ten, and your R-two zones, and we still comply with the state code. So you can see that in the first paragraph, um, where, oh, and the other thing is, this was originally a language that was already found in the R-two zone, this was something that we were already doing in the R-two zone, but obviously with the state, we're now expanding it into other zones where we, we are required to, so I moved it into Title Ten, Chapter Fourteen, which is, um, I think it's, it's, it's something about codes applicable to all zones or, or ordinance is applicable to all zones or something, but then I've made two sentences, as you can see, to designate where it's allowed as a conditionally permitted approval process, and where it's just not permitted or allowed. And then I go on and, and I've taken kind of the previous language and I've changed it, instead of saying single rental unit to internal accessory dwelling unit, and then explained how it works, the other thing you can't do anymore is you can't limit what amount of the home can be used for single-family rental, so before, we had a requirement that no more than fifty percent can be used for that, that's no longer something that you can say, you can't say resident, uh, if you're a property owner, you're living there, you, you, you can only live in fifty percent and then rent fifty, so if I own my home and I don't wanna use twenty percent of it and rent the rest out, eighty percent to a family, 'cause maybe I get more rental income, I have that right to do that, that's what the state's saying, and so, so we had to change that. Um, the other things that they say is, is you can, you can require a mode of egress for, for any residence in an internal accessory dwelling unit, hence the first term there. Um, secondary entrance, so if here's like an, an original dwelling, great, done that, I've added one that says you can't, you don't, uh, internal accessory dwelling unit shall not alter, change or alter in any way the exterior appearance of the primary dwelling, state code says you can do that, and, and then there is a weird one, it talks about, uh, a felling septic tank not being able to have an internal accessory dwelling unit, the chances of this happening are very rare, but we do have some A-one areas where maybe someone might somehow have septic, it's not allowed anymore by our code, if you develop property, you have to attach to sewer, but there might have been some outlier property owner that may wanna do this that has septic, well, if they ca- if they have failing septic, then they couldn't apply for conditional use permit anyway. The, the, the benefit that the state did provide to us, we can still, we can still do, uh, conditional use permits for all of us, it does allow us to have a permitting process, so that's a good thing. Um, but again, if they meet the criteria found in, it's not, it's not a conditional use permit that you can right-way in conditions, it's just this, this is the checklist, if they meet the checklist, then, then they're, they're giving it and they move on with their lives and everybody goes on. Um, and obviously, the other thing is they have to be owner occupied, the, the, the state code is clear on that, so that's the only other thing. Um, so anyway, and then the last one is they still have to have the off-street parking space, one off-street parking space per resident when they do that, uh, residents, excuse me, so, you know, the primary dwelling in, and then the internal accessory dwelling unit would have to have it. Um, I can quickly cover the definitions, which is the last one, uh, Title Ten, Chapter Two, as part of this internal accessory dwelling unit, they, they went and they, 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 they being the legislature approved, uh, statement that says you no longer can define a family through terms of relation, so in working with the city attorney, we had to come up with language that seems to meet the intent of.
You can't.
The relation, you, you can't, i- if you see what I've omitted, where it says one or more persons related by blood, marriage, adoption, or legal guardianship, et cetera, that term relation can no longer apply to your definition of a family in your city code, so you have to find other ways to explain or, or define what a family is, so, yeah, kinda weird, I, I guess maybe some cities, i- it's been more negatively applied and to developers, I don't know the reason for that, but that's what they did, so what it does in our case is it completely eliminates a category, um, and then we only have two categories of what is defined as a family, so, so that's what you have shown there, is, is that, and you can see in working with, in, in the new definition A, which is old C, we've tried to craft language that meets the intent of what was previously there, but not use any terms related to explain that, so that's our, right now, that's the best attempt at doing that, and, and the attorney will, will continue to work with me and see if we can find better language, but that's what that is, and then you'll see we've added two new definitions for internal accessory dwelling unit and primary dwelling to make it more clear, so that, that's the long and short of it, I know it's a lot of kinda nuts and bolts and mechanics, but really, what I did and, and with the attorney's guidance is use what, what direction we have from the Utah legal cities in town and the, and HB eighty-two to put it in here, so there you have it as it is, and I know we're out of time, but if you have any questions for me in the last minute, feel free, or we can talk about it in the main, the main work meeting, or main, uh, business meeting, so there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Raggett. Okay. Any discretionary items? Okay, ready to adjourn and head to our regular meeting? All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to.
All right, it, is, it's not quite six thirty, let's let it hit six thirty.
Six twenty-nine.
Yeah, let's let it hit six thirty.
Is your phone dead?
It was, yeah.
Hit six thirty. All right, we'll try it again. Welcome everybody to our Tuesday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to note that all commissioners are here with the exception of, uh, Commissioner Herman. Um, do we have, if, do we have any public comment?
I think all three of these fine gentlemen are here for the action item number one.
Perfect. Um, we'll move into presentations and reports, Mr. Raggett?
Thank you, I won't, I won't, uh, go into too much detail, uh, beyond what I said in the work session, other than to note that, uh, the next meeting, we will, um, do the work meetings slash work session up in the conference room as we did in the past, if you're concerned about that, please feel free to, to wear a mask or other things you may, uh, desire to, you know, if you're concerned about any COVID risks or anything along those lines, but we will do that, work sessions will be more like work sessions and, and we'll have trainings and try to do more of that, if you have any other ideas or things you wanna talk about, even, um, prior to that meeting, let me know, and I can bring it forward to the work session under the approval of the, the chairperson for the planning chairman, chairman for the planning commission. Um, the other items I talked about were Boathouse Cajun Seafood Restaurant is open for business, they are over by, uh, the Shoe Carnival, and Cafe Rio will have its grand opening on August sixth, Mobeta's is, is about forty percent on completion on their project, so is, um, Dutch Brothers Coffee across the street, and, uh, Raising Cane's has, has pulled their building permit, we expect them to start maybe as early as Friday, and the construction around that site continues to move forward, uh, I didn't note this in the earlier meeting, but the curb and gutter is going in for the, the hard improvements around the roadway, so that, that's a step in the right direction. Um, and then the apartment building there as part of Green Hill Apartments is, is moving along pretty rapidly, and the pool has started on that site, so if I missed anything, I apologize, but I believe that's everything I communicated in the other meeting in more detail, so with that, I will turn it over to, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Raggett. Um, consent items, consideration of meeting minutes from June eighth, twenty twenty-one work session and the regular meeting, do we have any changes or corrections, anybody?
I'd like to make the motion, will you approve the consent items?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Just for the purposes of the record, who, who was the second, you both said it at the same time, there you go. Hey, I just wanna make sure so she knows who to note.
Okay. Our action items. Um, action item one, A and B, discussion regarding, well, should we just do A and then go to B, do them both?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do A by itself, and then we'll go to B after.
Okay, discussion regarding proposed rezone request for properties located at approximately forty-eight oh four south, forty-eight sixteen south, forty-eight forty-four south, and forty-nine hundred south, fifteen hundred west, Riverdale, Utah, Mr. Raggett?
Thank you, um, I'll cover quickly some of the items I covered in a little more detail in the work session, but the applicant today for this rezon request is, is technically Jake Tate, he does have the partner applicants with him as well, uh, Jake works for Anderson Wallen and Associates, they have, um, secured, as you'll note in the packet, signatures of all the property owners in support of this rezon request, um, these properties are all currently zoned A-one, and they're either vacant properties and/or they have residential homes on them, three of them have residential homes on them, and the rest of the, the property area is, is vacant land at the current time. The goal, as you can see, for the proposed rezoning is for it to be regional commercial C-three zoning to allow them to do retail flex space development, uh, retail fulfillment and, and a lot of other, uh, exciting things that we'll discuss at a future meeting, I'm sure, but, uh, just as a primer, that's kinda what you're looking for here. Um, you'll see following the signature pages.
It dropped, Wanda.
Oh, it did?
Sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, let me call her right back, I apologize, hang on.
Sorry.
No, it's all right, it happened. We'll get her right back.
Hello?
Hello, hey, Wanda, sorry about that, you back with us?
Hello?
Can you hear me okay? Wanda? Wanda, can you hear us? Wanda, can you hear us?
Hello?
Hi, Wanda, it's Mike, can you hear me?
She's muted.
I'm telling her we can hear her.
Wanda, we're here, can you hear us? Wanda?
Are we there?
Yeah, we can hear you, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Maybe just text her and let her know we'll just continue the meeting and.
We have a quorum without some.
Okay, I can hear you.
Oh, you can? Okay, good. All right, good.
Sorry.
No problem. All right. So where, where I was going is following the signature pages, you'll see the application requirements, procedures for the rezon request, uh, items A through D. They've all been fulfilled and submitted to, um, I guess you'd say check or warrant scheduling a public hearing. You'll see thereafter, the narrative page dated June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, explaining the reasons for the rezon request and outlining, um, some of the project ideas and concepts of what they would look to. To potentially do in the future as part of that rezon request. And then thereafter, the, um, legal description, as well as the imagery of the properties being affected by this rezon request. And then the receipt showing payment of it. So that's everything I don't, I mean, there's not a whole lot of. In-depth discussion at this point, but if there's any, I guess, broad-based discussions, the, the applicant group is here available for any questions you may have. Um, again, not so much maybe of the substance of the reason, but, but about the application or any other technical items you see fit to, to discuss. And then, like I said, the next available, uh, planning commission meeting would be, I believe I said the twenty-seventh of, of July. So that would be the next available date, if you wanted to set that public hearing for that date. And I would defer to the planning commissioners if you have any questions for me or the applicants. Thank you.
I have one. And maybe I glossed over this too quickly, but based on the outline of the plat, I noticed that Clayton and Jenna Cook. Are a property owner within that boundary, but I didn't see anything as to their application with this. Are they party to this or are they not included?
You look. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see their signature sheet, I don't know. Is that, that might be bop. I wonder if that's bop and it's an old, it might be, I think that's bops.
They're the southernmost.
Yeah, it is bop.
It would be the bop is what it's listed as the owner.
Now I think about it, that's the old cook property, they, they sold that to bop, yeah.
Okay. I was just looking on the plat and saw the cooks and.
That's right, it's, it's Bob. They're, they're fairly newer owners of the property within the last eighteen months to two and a half years kind of timeframe. Yeah.
Okay.
I forgot that, thank you.
This, this is Wanda. I have one question, maybe you already answered and I got disconnected. What's the, what, what are you planning on doing with this piece of property? Is it going to be subdivided or are you going to have one whole business or what's your plan?
Yeah, the intention is to come in with a plat. Um, it will probably mostly be a consolidation plat to put it into one lot. And then the intent here is to develop a distribution retail hub where we could get some, uh, really good businesses in here that will fulfill those spaces. And, uh, yeah, we're looking at also the, uh, RDA parcel across the street and make it one harmonious project.
Yeah, that is one thing I did want to indicate, this is part of a, this is more just, just to give you background, not so much applying to the rezon, but the bigger picture aspect of it. So take that for what it's worth. Um, this is a, an RDA area, West Bench RDA area. This area has yet to be triggered by the, the, uh, city and the RDA agency of Riverdale. Um, obviously with, with the future plan for this property area, that would clearly be a good indicator and reason to trigger the area. And, and generate that increment to benefit the development of this property for, for maximization of the, the real estate. So that is, the, the, um, RDA is familiar with the efforts of, of Mr. Heap and Mr. Willie and, and Mr. Tate on this property. Um, and, and I can speak for the RDA, taking off my city hat, putting on my RDA hat on, that the RDA is, is familiar and comfortable with where, the direction this is heading at current time.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
The people that have their houses, are they going to be able to keep their houses or are they just going?
Uh, yeah, they will be relocated as part of the project. It would, it would be consumed into the, the commercial zone, so, and the intent is not to leave the homes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, consideration to set the public hearing for a proposed rezon request from agricultural A one zoning to regional commercial C three zoning. For properties located at approximately forty-eight oh four south, forty-eight sixteen south, forty-eight forty-four south. And forty-nine hundred south, fifteen hundred west, Riverdale, Utah, eight four four oh five, as requested by AWA Engineering Group and represented by Jake Tate.
Again, I don't have really a whole lot to say, other than I would defer to the planning commission, if you'd like to.
Make a motion.
Make a motion and set the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion, we set a public hearing for Tuesday, July twenty-seventh, regarding the proposed rezon request from agriculture A one zoning to regional commercial C three zoning. For properties forty-eight oh four south, forty-eight sixteen south, forty-eight forty-four south, and forty-nine hundred south, fifteen hundred west in Riverdale, as requested by AWA Engineering Group.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Will you poll the commissioners, please?
Aye.
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 Okay.
I'll see you guys in two weeks.
Okay. Action item two, review and discussion of proposed amendments to certain chapters located in title ten of the Riverdale Municipal Code. Mr. Rickett?
Thank you, in light of the work session, uh, anybody who, who's listening or interested, I would defer to check with the work session if you want to know more about what was discussed. But, uh, for the purposes of this meeting, I'll just note, um, a quick summary of what we talked about in the work session. And that is we're looking at changes to title ten in chapters two, chapters nine C, and chapters fourteen in respective sections. The first one is, is applied to title ten, chapter fourteen, section four, under yard regulations, it's subsection L. Um, there's a, a suggestion or a, a request for a modification and clarification of the language therein. To change terms such as lower to be located and located closer and to change thirty feet to twenty-five feet to line up better with the regard setback of the representative residential zones. Um, the changes to article, or excuse me, title ten, chapter nine, article C, which is applicable to the R two zone is taking language there under conditional uses in subsection three. As it relates to single family, um, dwellings with owner occupied, or excuse me. Yeah, single family dwelling that are owner occupied with rental unit residential uses. And taking that out and, and applying it to House Bill eighty-two and more broadly applying it to the following zones being A one, A two, RE fifteen, RE twenty, R one ten and R two zones. Um, and that would put us into compliance with the standards of HB eighty-two. Uh, with the additional opportunity to reduce, uh, twenty-five percent of the overall re- single family residentially zoned areas of our community. Which would, would remove the other residential areas as well as not applying it to the multiple family residential dwelling areas of the community. Any properties that are six thousand square feet or smaller in the single family dwellings and any mobile home park zones in the community. So I've gone over all the other details therein and, and we can discuss if the planning commissioners have any other questions or comments for me. One thing I didn't note in the work session, I will note, it's, it's really just a, it's, it's something that's bothered me the whole time I've been here. The second sentence on page two said, said exiting units will be grandfathered. It obviously should always been existing, so I've just added the S to make that more clear. And what that is, is, is in the event that we have a duplex in a single family residential zone. And the new owner is to buy that, that property, they would be subject to the code as a new owner and becoming in compliance, so.
So they won't be grandfathered in?
So if I owned, if I owned a duplex prior, I don't get the benefit of selling it to someone as a duplex. That person would have to want to owner occupy it, but then they could still come in, do it the right way, get the conditional use and have a renter in the basement. But they couldn't just go and replace the duplex ownership and buy it as a duplex at that point.
So there, if you own it now, you're grandfathered in, you can.
Right.
Rent both out, but.
Yeah.
You sell it.
Yeah, you owner occupy it and then you get a renter in the basement and just go through the process. So that's what we've done in the past, it's worked, it's worked fairly well, I won't say it's perfect. Cause we, obviously absent somebody complaining or, or somebody in the city letting us know that there's a concern there, we don't really have the sophistication to track it. But, but that, that's the intent of that language, even in the prior code, the way it was written, so. Um, and then the, the second change, or the third change, excuse me, is in chapter two, under definitions. The definition of family as part of HB eighty-two was changed. Um, the guidance of, of the Utah legacies and towns is any reference in your definition of a family to the word related or relation needs to be omitted and reworded so as to not be there. So that is what you'll see here. Um, and that, what that did is it, we had three categories of definition of family. One no longer seemed to be applicable or work, so we removed it. And now we have two definitions of what a family is and, and they've been redrafted as such, without the terms relation or related at any capacity to make that requirement.
We're now woke.
So, um, and then finally, you can see I've added definitions for internal accessory dwelling unit and primary dwelling. So those are all the changes. I, I don't know, I defer, if you guys have any questions for me as planning commissioners at this time, clearly, I would, I would keep the, you know, the, the dialogue kind of internal until we actually have a formal public hearing. And then, and then obviously with the public, we can discuss more in detail. And again, the attorney has looked over this, he's going to also review a little more in detail and give me back feedback. So you might see slight, slight tweaks or variations when I bring it back to actually set a formal public hearing. But I, I, the purpose of tonight's meeting is number one, to, to make you aware of what it is, give you some time to look it over. And number two, if you have any feedback or comments at this point, to take those from you, so.
So we're not families anymore.
Well, well, you are, it's just defined in a different way. And it'll be, it'll be interesting to see, number one, what other cities do if they even change it in compliance with the code and, and change their, their family definitions. Cause it's real sneaky, I'll be honest. Uh, I almost didn't pick up on it until we had some really clear direction from Utah legacies and town leadership. Because the whole key and the whole focus has been, it's kind of the internal accessory dwelling is the whole focus. By the way, there's this little change to, to families and hopefully you don't catch it and then we'll catch it. I mean, it kind of feels that way in how it was drafted, it's kind of unfortunate, it feels that way. So it'll be interesting, number one, to see if cities catch it. And number two, it'll be interesting to see what all the other cities that have similar language for a definition of family do to define it. See if they come up with similar concepts or if they go completely in a different direction. I had a hard time figuring out, how do you define a family without using the term related and relation? It was kind of a weird, a weird mental construct to put yourself in, but, but I think we came up with something that, that works and should work for our community.
You're just changing the definition, but not the word.
Yeah, yeah, so exactly, right? You, you get what I'm doing, it's still. It technically says the same thing, but that word relation or related isn't in there to define it, is what we did, so. Anyway, yeah, it's, 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 it's something else. And unfortunately, we've heard some indicators that, uh, there, there may be other interesting bills forthcoming next February to further. Define for cities, how zoning code should be applied, let's put it that way, so we're nervous about that. So, keep you updated, but.
Well, behind us, we have some pluggmas, they're like the Colorado clan. And I see probably like forty to eighty people in a house.
I don't think we should have this on the record.
Okay.
Mike?
Well, I mean, if there's questions or, or, or concerns, but, but if, if the point is that there's a concern that, um. This will be harder to enforce, the answer is yes. This, this will be harder to enforce.
All right.
So if that's where you're going, the answer is yes, yes. Uh, the only, I did, I did fail to mention one thing that is crucial, I should have mentioned this earlier. They did, they did include in the definition of, of an internal accessory dwelling unit, and you'll see it in the definitions. Um, says this accessory dwelling unit may only be established for the purpose of offering a long-term rental use of thirty consecutive days or longer. That's their effort to shut down on people trying to turn their basement to a VRBO type of a use. Again, the hard part with that is how do I, or how does the city enforce that and know about that? You know, they say, well, you can, you can look at advertisements and online or in the paper, but it's not like I have an employee that's going to sit there four hours a day. Scrolling through the ads, looking for VRBOs, right? So unfortunately, that's, that's nice, it's a nice semantic, but the reality is how do we going to enforce that? So at least I tried to put it in the definition, so at least gives us some legal standing and, and, and opportunity that way. But yeah, it opens up the door for more VRBO abuse frankly, and, and also harder enforcement of these kinds of uses. And you, you could say or feel what you want, I need to remain objective, but, but I can at least say, I think we as leadership are very disappointed in the state legislature and some of their, their efforts here. Let's put it that way. So.
Is there anything in the old, as opposed to the new, that would restrict how many people in a dwelling? I mean.
Yeah.
Family, you know, it would be a little easier, but.
If you look at the definition B, it's still four persons. It's still, it's still no more than four persons is a family.
Live in a home?
Yeah, as long as they're not, yeah, so before it was always four persons, not related. So it still is four persons, just four independent strangers living together as a family, any more than that is, is technically violation.
What if it's a five-bedroom house?
If there's, if it's a five-bedroom house and there's more than four unrelated persons living together, it'd still be a violation of the family definition. Yeah, that, that has always been our code, it's just now we can't use the term related, so now it's foreign-related or four, I just did it. Four persons living together. If they're unrelated, who knows, but, but, but otherwise, the definition, two persons and their children, grandchildren, foster children catches the other, obviously, the other application of a family that's more traditional. And, and maybe it should say up to two persons and their children, grandchildren, foster children, because obviously you have single parents and their children, of course. But this has given the, the single parent the opportunity, I'm kind of debating with myself, but the, this gives the, the single parent the opportunity to still have a boyfriend or girlfriend or whatever, helping raise their children in their home if they choose, so. Yeah, it's, it's, it's interesting.
You could have a home that has two single mothers, each with two kids, that would be in violation.
Yeah, and but even before with the old code, it would have been allowed. That would have been allowed even in the current code before we change it and not be in violation, yeah, yeah. We've had situations where. A girlfriend and a boyfriend live together and they have their own kids and they each have five or six kids and you get a house full of twelve or thirteen, living together in a twenty-five hundred square foot home, that's legal. That's already illegal right now. And it would continue to be legal and the state seems to back that position of it being legal.
Have all those kids and.
Yeah, if they can figure it out, yep. But yeah, forty, forty unrelated persons who all rent out bedrooms and have three bunk beds in every room. That's a major violation of a definition of a, a family at that point. But again, how do you police that? See, that, that's, that's what the state's kind of done here, is made this a lot harder to police it and enforce it. So, anyway.
I didn't even realize that there was a code like that.
Yeah. Yep, and, and if you don't do this, this is the stick. If you don't do this, then every single family zone in your community is subject to this, the code, the way the state has it written. Which is more even open-ended than what we have here. So what I've tried to do with guidance from the attorney is use every tool that the state and, and Utah legacies and town says we can at least put into this code. As a checklist of things to make sure it's done safely and as, as capably as possible without being a nuisance or an issue to neighbors around the, the property. Or obviously residents living there who might be at risk. Obviously residents living there who might be at risk. If you don't have a motive egress at your window and a fire and you're a renter, it's a pretty dangerous situation. Right? So.
So the action that we're looking to do today is to set up the.
No action, just, just, it's, it's just, just homework. This is just a discussion and homework. Yeah, here, here's, here's document. Look it over. If you see something you like or don't like, or whatever, you wanna let me know, let me know. Um, I probably will bring it back in two weeks for scheduling a public hearing for it though, cause I think two weeks from today will give me plenty of time to really. Tighten up the bolts on it if anything's loose and make it right. So about two weeks, you'll, you'll see a schedule. Uh, I'll be bringing it forward to schedule a public hearing two weeks thereafter. Yeah. And I may even sneak on other code updates. I mean, I, I, I have the opportunity to still do that right now, so I might sneak on one or another one on it as well. We'll see. I need to talk to the attorney and see if I missed something. I might have missed something that we're mandatorily required. Yeah.
Sneak something in, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, it's crazy. Yep.
Okay. Any discretionary items?
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Hi, Wanda.
Goodbye. See you later.
See ya.